It is Tuesday, December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. This is a Fairmont area school board meeting. After following this meeting at six P M., we will have our truth in taxation hearing. So if anyone's watching this now and would like to come at six P M., we'll begin that. Our roll call this evening is all members of our school board are present. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we should have a green agenda in front of you, but has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting?
I have, and I'd make a motion to approve those minutes.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. So a motion by Dan, a second by Nicole, to approve the November twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen school board meeting minutes as printed. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Then we should, you should have the green agenda. And I have no additions or corrections to that. Does anyone have any thing needs to be added or talked about?
Danielle, were you prepared to report on the operations meeting? I mean, does that make a difference? Danielle, I missed part of the meeting, I know, the other day. I got, I could, could present on that.
Did either way, I mean, I have the minutes, but I know it's...
Minutes, oh, okay. That's fine, then you can do it. I didn't, I didn't see the minutes come.
Okay.
Okay, so Danielle's gonna stay on that. Any other questions about that? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. A motion by Julie, a second by Nicole, to approve the December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen school board meeting agenda as printed on the green form. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? All right, tonight we have, I guess it's a commu, school and community report, and we have Chris Engelby here with us today, and she has two things to talk about. We Day at the high school and also the high school blood drive. So, welcome and thanks for coming.
Good evening. Just want to thank you for letting me come and speak about two of the things that I'm part of right now. First of all, I have to apologize, I have about forty-five students in my We Day group, which we call the cardiac group, and not one could make it tonight to be with me. So, last year, we were able to get about fifteen kids, but I tell you, these kids are just always so busy with working and athletics and other events going on. So, just to give you a little report about the We Day group. I have about forty-five students in our cardiac group. We meet about twice a month at seven fifty, and I had thirty-seven students that went to the We Day conference at the Exel Center in Saint Paul in November. We load the bus at five and we leave at five fifteen, and it's amazing, I usually have every single person that can make it. They bring their sleeping bags, their pillows, their coffee or whatever, and donuts, and they're raring to go, but a lot of times, they can't make it to a seven fifty meeting before school. So, I just always think it's kind of ironic how they can make it for this conference because it is a phenomenal conference. Eighteen thousand students from Minnesota high schools that attend. It is packed, and those tickets are like gold to try to come to the conference, and you have to earn the ticket to come to that We Day conference. And so, and we end up raising funds. The whole idea of We Day is to help our communities and to help, you know, others in the world as well. So, that's kind of like the theme is just helping others in the community and the world. So, we get so pumped up at that conference, you know, because we get kind of excited, and so my leaders that are with me are Rebecca Denaway and Teresa Keel, and we kind of sat down after that conference and just kind of set up when we're gonna meet and all the different things that we want to do. So, the first thing that we wanted to do was to volunteer to ring the bell for the Salvation Army. So, we set up one evening on a Thursday at Shopco, and I had eight kids that volunteered and did that, and they said they all had a great time. And then we also set up last Thursday at Fairway, and so I had eight kids that also volunteered to ring the bell, and they all, I was kind of, you know, texting back and say, hey, you know, how did it go? Hey, it went great, and so, and so I want to just make a comment. I had Abby Fitzgerald and Dana Madsen, two seniors, that went from four to five at Fairway, and they dressed up. They told me they were gonna have an outfit for them, and so they dressed up and they sent me a picture, and so Dana was a penguin and Abby was a Christmas box that was, you know, like it was decorated. So, they, this was their quote, Abby sent me this back and said, "We sang and danced, pretty sure we just got a record amount of money for that time period." And so, anybody that went to Fairway during that, that hour, you know, definitely, and they showed me, you know, all the different dances they were doing, and, you know, how fun, you know, to have my kids to volunteer and raise money for Salvation Army. Now, in February, we're gonna try to get at least one or two teams to go and do the, the Kids Against Hunger, and that's at the Armory, and so we did that last year, and we just had, you know, a blast. We made tons of meals. We were kind of on a competition, so we were going as fast as we can, and I tell you, I was pretty exhausted afterwards for working, I think it was like a two-hour shift. So, we'll do that again in February, and then we're also gonna try to do some fundraisings around town to go toward our fundraiser. We are doing education in Ecuador, so that's where we're gonna raise our money for this year, and so, and then we're gonna also maybe try to do some other local community things for our group. So, anyway, so that's a We Day wrap-up. Any questions about that?
What's "we"? What does, is it an acronym, or what is the...
It, it's just kind of talking about like "we", you know, helping others, and so that's, I've never seen, like, does W stand for something, does Z E stand for, I've never seen it that way. It's always like, you know, We Day, and so, and it has been live, those conferences, it's out of Canada, and so there's not a lot of conferences in the United States. So, there's one like in Minneapolis, I think there's one in maybe Los Angeles, maybe one in Chicago, so there's not a lot of them, and so, and they always have those live on the internet that you can always watch those conferences go on. And I know Good Morning America actually did, you know, a little blurb about We Day. I think it was in August or September that they were showing a little clip of what We Day, you know, is all about, so, and it's, it's kind of cool to see all the different schools and what they do to try to raise funds for, you know, the We Day program.
So, Chicago and Los Angeles and Minneapolis all do it on the same day?
No, they're all spread out. So, like, ours was early, and then there's usually one, I think I saw, because there's like little dates on T-shirts that they were having, so I think there's one that's gonna be in April, you know, so they kind of really spread them out because they have a lot of them in Canada, too, and usually they have, you know, almost the same speakers. There's a guy that comes and speaks, and he has no legs, and he moves with his arms, and he's, you know, traveled, he's climbed mountains, and he always comes to all of their conferences and is a speaker that just talks about how to help, you know, other people, and just talk about like, you know, what he's done, you know, with his life, with the, you know, things that he were, you know, he was born with, so.
So, it's to like raise awareness of the need in the world?
Yep, and your community, and the whole thought is helping others, you know, helping others in your community and helping others in the world. So, they pick like these pillars for the world fundraisers, and you can pick different countries, they have a program that you can pick, and so like one program is education, help like bring, you know, materials to schools, help maybe build a school. Another one is water, to try to bring clean water to these countries. Another one is to buy goats and to bring goats to families to try to help, you know, produce, you know, the milk, and then they can sell that, and so, yeah, so those are, you know, different things of, and then the groups just pick of what they want to do. And our group has always picked the education, but other groups pick water or, you know, you know, the Goat Foundation, so, yeah, there's a, but they really have a neat program of, they just give you this program, and then you just set it up, and they're always willing. I have a rep that is out of Toronto that I communicate on a regular basis, that she always sends me new bulletins about what's going on. Hey, there's a fundraiser, would you be interested in this to raise funds for your, you know, for Ecuador? So, yeah, it's really kind of a neat program.
So, the kids never really travel to Ecuador? They just get, they raise the funds and then they're sent through the We organization?
Right. But, there are possibilities at the conference, they always do a raffle, and they will pick like maybe one school that gets a free trip, and they'll have maybe like two or three people that have a free trip to go to maybe Ecuador or, you know, other places. I know our leaders were kind of looking at possibly, you know, maybe trying a trip in the future. We ended up getting fifteen younger kids that were eighth, ninth, and tenth graders, because I'm gonna lose quite a few of my seniors after this year, and so, we're looking at maybe in the future, trying to raise funds and maybe try to go on a trip, because what a neat thing to like raise funds and be able to go to that country where you're raising funds and see where your money actually is going to. So, they do have those trips, and, you know, they have different programs of what you can do to try to, you know, raise funds to go there. So, I think in the future, we would like to do that sometime.
So, how do you recruit students to be in the We organization? What do you call it?
We call, it's our We Day group called the Cardiacs, and so, and so, and our theme is like to, you know, help others, and so, really how we ended up getting those fifteen new members is word of mouth. I just kind of had a meeting, I said, you know, if you guys have some friends that you want to, you know, try to recruit, and that's how they came. They kept coming, and, you know, I would say, hey, you know, come and we're gonna go to this meeting, and so all of those new members went to that We Day conference, and it was awesome.
Okay, and so how'd you get cardiac? The kids picked that, I would guess, huh?
Yeah, I, I don't have my notes, I wish I did, but Rebecca Denaway kind of came up with that in which it's kind of short for Cardinals, and it just kind of caring for others, and it's actually, for We Day, it's, it's called, you know, caring for others, and so we just thought of caring for others and just having the activities, and so that's how we kind of shortened it up for Cardiacs, and so...
Okay, so then, like when you do Community Day or Community Service Day, is that also part of this We and your cardiac group?
Right, that, so I have to fill out two reports in order to go to the next We Day conference, so my first report was due, I think it was the middle of November, and so my rep will remind me, hey, don't forget to fill this out, and then they ask different questions, like what world fundraiser are you doing, and then they also have to see that you're doing a local community. So, I kind of put in like, okay, Salvation Army we did, sometimes we might try to go to Heaven's Table, but then the big one is the Community Service Project Day, I write that in, too, and that will count toward helping others in the community.
So, then are these kids in cardiac, are they part of the leaders of the service day?
No, that's just, it's just part of, of the Cardinal Connection groups.
Okay, all right. Very cool. Anybody else have questions for Chris on that one?
One of the things that we want to try to do, and I know it's been hard, is they are willing to bring a speaker down to talk to our whole school about what We Day is, because I know it's been hard to kind of advertise what is We Day. The kids are like, well, what is this We Day? You know, what's the cardiac group? What are these meetings? And so I usually explain it, but if we could have a speaker come down to our high school, and then they kind of meet with our small group later on for an hour to kind of get them like more organized, that would be just a huge thing, but unfortunately, they only can usually come in the fall, and it's right around homecoming, and we cannot, I mean, we already like take away from class time, and so that's been really a hard time, and I always think, you know, if we can have somebody come down in the spring. So, I'm gonna still try to work on that if we can get somebody, because I think that would make a huge difference of what this program really is all about.
And so when the kids come back, do they, like, how do, do they report on this to the other kids, or do you have some kind of...
No, and I wish we would, because that's, that's why I kind of wanted my kids to come tonight, so they could really tell you, you know, what was your, you know, experience of going to that We Day conference, because I think a lot of them were just kind of blown away, because it's like, almost like a rock concert, and then you have these big-time speakers that come, you know, like Henry Winkler was one of those speakers that came, and they only speak for about five, ten minutes, and I was in awe. I kept telling the kids beforehand, hey, we're gonna see the fonts. Guess what they all said? Who's that? I'm like, come on, you guys, Happy Days, and like, I don't know what you're talking about, I'm like, oh, that's right, you guys are just young pups, and so, so he spoke, and he just, you know, they just always have such a great message of just, you know, helping others, and they talk about people that have dealt with, you know, issues of bullying and, and how we can deal with, you know, bullying, and, and they have like an anti-bullying campaign that we can do in, in April, and, and so, you know, that's what's kind of neat. So, here I was in awe, you know, when Henry Winkler came up, and they were all like probably on their phones or talking, and like, oh, we don't know who this guy is, but, you know, but yet still, you know, he just had, you know, an awesome message, but we've had Martin Sheen come, Magic Johnson last year, they always have big-name, Band Perry came last year. This year, I hate to say, but I really didn't know the musical groups, because they were like more into the teen groups, and so I would always lean down and ask one of my kids, who is that? Don't you know? I'm like, no, sorry.
Oh, I was gonna ask you who, like, who does the music, but...
Oh, yeah, it's like big-time, you know, bands, individual groups, but I could not tell you one person that was there, because I just was not familiar with those, you know, and so, but they all knew, and they were all dancing and hooting and hollering, and so, they were like, oh, this is great, you know, this person's coming, and, yeah, so, but it is, it's a big to-do with this conference. It's really awesome.
And eighteen thousand people, that's a lot of kids, and...
Yeah, it really is, and we always have shirts.
And where was it?
It was at the Exel Center at Saint Paul, and we always designed shirts. I know I had the Junker Meyer Twins, Jordan and Kelsey and Brianna Jackson that designed the shirt this year, and it was kind of neon pink, and so everybody asked, hey, who's the pink group? Hey, we're from Fairmont High School, you know, so that was kind of neat to display those shirts and, and, you know, kind of, and, you know, we had thirty-seven kids, so that's a big group that, you know, came, so...
Is that like average for schools, or how?
Yeah, anywhere.
Or can you, you can, how, well, how do you get the tickets?
Yeah, so, they'll ask you, like, how many tickets do you need, and so I'll say, okay, I have like, you know, thirty-seven kids in my group, but then like we recruited, so we had fifteen more kids, and so what ended up happening is, they'll say, okay, we have some extra ones, how many more do you need? And then they, you know, send us, and they usually have been able to give us, you know, as many as we could. The first year we went, this is our third year there, our first year, they gave us fifty-five tickets, I had fifty-five kids up there, and so, but not everybody continued to, you know, go to the meetings and stuff, and so, and I have a requirement now that you need to go to the meetings, you need to like be part of our group, and so, like last year, we were in charge of the food service at the Family Fun Fair, and we raised a lot of money, and, you know, it was great, you know, and so, but the kids know now, in order to go to the conference, you need to be active in our group, and I think that helps.
And so it's mostly coming up with projects, is that what you're doing?
Yep, yep, that's mostly what we try to do, and so, and then quickly, Blood Drive, we had about a hundred and, I think it was about a hundred and three kids that signed up and adults. Joe Brown was one of them that donated, which was wonderful, and so, and then we had eighty-three units of blood that was donated, and so, the first hour was like, okay, I had a lot of people that couldn't donate, because maybe they're hemoglobin, or they're, you know, they're low in iron, and so, but I, and I had some foreign exchange students that weren't able to give, but then after a while, we really started to pick up, and, and it was a, it was a good day, and so we were very pleased, and I know the Red Cross was very pleased of how many we were able to donate. And then we'll have another one coming up, I think it's in March, and so, usually that one's a little bit less, but I'm hoping that we'll be able to, you know, get that same goal, and so, and I have two student coordinators that pretty much are in charge of that. I have Eli Green and Ellie Tonner that really help out and, you know, get the donations, pick up everything, and it was, it's been wonderful to have them, you know, kind of help me out, and, and we kind of work well as a team, so...
Do you have to make like an appointment or a schedule?
Yep, we have the, the, Eli and Ellie go to the English classes about two weeks ahead, they present like a little speech about, you know, the importance of donating blood, and then we have a sign-up sheet in the English classes, and that's how they usually sign up, and then I have announcements, I announce it in my upper grade health class, and then we also have it like on the TV screen, and so, yeah, so that's how we kind of, and then a lot of times, I have kids that'll say, hey, now, you know, and they announce it at Cardinal Connections, too, so that kind of helps, but it takes a while to get all those kids, but we finally get them, and then Rebecca Denaway does an excellent job, she's the one that kind of gets all their schedules and set up when they're going to donate, and so, I don't know what I would do with any, you know, with all of those three, because they really helped me out a lot to do this.
What's the age?
They can donate sixteen or older. You have to have a parent consent form if you're sixteen, but after that, you can come and donate after you're seventeen or eighteen. You just need to have an I D. and come in and, and do that.
Well, a hundred and three signing up is pretty good, then, out of...
It was. At first, we only had eighty-one, but the last week, we really, you know, increased, and so, and I try to advertise, you know, with the staff, too. We usually have a good number of staff that will donate, and they're regular donators, so...
So, this is a student blood drive, is it open to the public? If members of the public want to donate, can they?
Well, usually, we don't have enough time to get the community, but I did have a gentleman, I didn't get his name, but he came from the community and donated, which was wonderful. You know, if, if we could fit him in, that's great, but usually it's more like just designated for the school, just so we can, because we can only go up to two o'clock, and we were there until the last people got done donating about two-thirty, which is great, because usually it kind of slows down in the afternoon, but, but, yeah, it's, it's, it's just a wonderful cause. They're just in so much need of blood, and I think it's great for these kids to remember that, you know, you're saving a person's life by doing this, and so, and we didn't have really anybody get sick, not really feign on us, it was wonderful. Once in a while, we'll have those, so...
So, where do you hold it at?
In the south gym. That works out great, and then we just kind of have, and the Red Cross workers, they, you know, they really enjoy that area, too, and so, and it's, it's packed in there, but we have it set up really nice, and so, and they get treats, the kids, so I think some of them maybe want to donate, just because, hey, do we get food, too? Yes, and so we feed them well, and so, because of all the donations, you know, so, we have like, you know, all the different eating areas, Culligan, you know, brings us water, and Fairway, Hy-Vee, the grocery stores, Walmart, they give us like water, and Bake Goods, Perkins, McDonald's brings like their jug of their orange juice, the Hi-C orange drink, so, yeah, there's many places that donate, and it's just wonderful.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, very cool. What else you have to report on? That's it? That's the only two things so far?
That's probably enough.
Till spring, right?
Yeah, then I'll be back.
Yep.
So, all right, thank you, you guys.
With the big service day. All right, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's report and calendar. Superintendent Brown?
Thank you, Diane. First of all, let's take a look at the calendar. Let's see, end of the year here, Christmas break is coming up. Just a reminder that students will be in session until Tuesday, the twenty-second of December, and then they'll be gone until January fourth, is when they'll come back And we'll go back in the regular schedule, we'll have two school board meetings in January, one on January twelfth and one on January twenty-sixth. Take a look at the enrollment report.
I have a question. On January sixth, board members, do you see there's a three-six staff meeting?
Yes, I do.
Will have to let us know if you can attend that before, so, think about that.
And just, and speaking of three-six, one of the new things that will start on January fourth is on January fourth, the students in grades three through six will be receiving hot lunch every day, I'm sorry, hot breakfast every day. That's a new implementation. Right now, we've just been doing it once or twice a week, but starting on January fourth, grades three through six, grades K through two will get hot breakfast twice a week, but students in grades three through six will get hot breakfast every day, starting on January fourth. And then the food service, we'll see how that goes over the month of January. If that works well, then they may consider expanding that every day to the K-one-two.
So, it's a trial run?
It is, it is.
Will they still have the cold option, the...
No.
Okay.
No. Students are asking for hot breakfast, and so they're going to get what they ask for. And the food service, they're actually in the, they're currently scheduling or ordering additional equipment, hot carts, things like that, that they need additional trays to provide the hot breakfast.
I see another thing on the calendar.
Okay, go ahead.
Board, high school's doing lunch, so you have to decide about that on January seventh at eleven-thirty, so, we should let Judy know if you're, if we're, if you can attend that, okay? Thank you. All right.
And we did have a, there was a meeting last week, a luncheon last week, of fifty-six new students that we have at the high school this year. These are students that came to us from other districts or foreign exchange students, Saint John Vini and Saint Paul's Lutheran, and they had a luncheon for the fifty-six students, and that was really interesting to talk to the students, and especially the, we have a foreign exchange student from China, and we have another foreign exchange student from, trying to think, where the hell the student's from?
Norway.
I think it is, Norway, the one that's playing hockey for the first time.
Carles from Spain.
Who's that? Okay, he was not there that day, okay.
And another student from Spain.
Really?
No, I'm just repeating her, because you can't hear her on the microphone.
That is correct. Mr. Brown apologizes, I have a bit of a head cold right now, and so, okay, back to student enrollment. Right now, latest student enrollment, one thousand six hundred ninety-five students, compared to last year, at this time, we're serving one thousand six hundred ninety-three. And January tends to be a busy month for high schools, that tends to be sometimes when we actually pick up more students and open enroll for the second semester, and so we think probably between now and the next three weeks, will probably be some changes in that. I just want to brief the board, too, I have a few minutes tonight to talk about the federal government last week passed the Every Student Succeeds Act, and President Obama signed that act into law last week, and this was a law that replaces the No Child Left Behind law that was passed in two thousand and two and signed by President George W. Bush, and the federal government, you know, has been involved in public education since nineteen sixty-five is when the Elementary and Secondary Education Act was passed by President Johnson. But the nice thing about this new act is that it's, is giving states more flexibility and more power over what tests to decide on how to test, and it gives states more authority to decide what curriculum to have their students learn, and there's been a lot of discussions statewide or nationwide about the Common Core curriculum, and just a reminder that in Minnesota, Minnesota has adopted the Common Core for language arts, but we did not adopt the Common Core for mathematics, and the reason for that is the state feels that our mathematics standards are so much higher than the national Common Core math standards, that we decided not to lower our standards and go with it nationwide. So, our standards are a lot higher, we expect more out of our students in math than the rest of the country, but our students will still be given tests throughout the year, but again, we'll have more flexibility. The federal government is going to fund the new Every Student Succeeds Act at the tune of twenty-four point nine billion dollars, almost twenty-five billion dollars, and that's very similar, under the No Child Left Behind, they funded that at twenty-three billion dollars a year, so it's a little bit of an increase in federal funding. A big thank you, though, for one of our U.S. congressmen from Minnesota, Representative John Klein is a Republican congressman from the metropolitan area, just south of the Twin Cities, and Representative John Klein is the chair this year of the House Education Committee, and he was one of the key people that moved that piece of legislation through. Another interesting point about John Klein, when President Reagan was president, John Klein was in the military, and he was the person that would carry the nuclear bomb codes, what they call the presidential football. It's a special case, it has the nuclear codes in case the president has to declare nuclear war, but Representative John Klein, when he was in the military, he carried the the nuclear codes around for President... codes around for President Reagan. John Klein is retiring from the United States Congress at the end of next year, he has chosen not to run. But this new law passed on a very bipartisan method. Three hundred and fifty-nine members of the House passed it, voted for it, only sixty-four voted against it. And in the United States Senate, eighty-five senators voted for it, twelve voted against it, and the other people that didn't vote are outrunning for president. Okay? That's true. Anyway, so we'll watch for that. And then finally, the, a group of legislators met with a group of superintendents on Friday. We met in North Mankato with the South Central Service Cooperative, and I do have a handout that I put together for you, but superintendents from Fairmont, Wasika, New Ulm, Blue Earth area, St. James, Martin County West, and Maple Island. We met with three state representatives, Clark Johnson. Clark Johnson represents North Mankato and parts of St. Peter. Of course, Bob Gunther represents Martin County and other counties in the area. And Tony Cornish would be the other half of Senator Julie Rosen, Senate District. And only Clark Johnson serves on the Education Committee, but we had a very nice meeting that lasted for two hours. And we talked about a whole series of topics. The first thing we wanted to do was to basically thank the legislators for their support for public education. We've really had a good run the last few years, and it's been a bipartisan effort in Minnesota. Democrats and Republicans have worked together to increase the state aid for schools. We also really thank them for the idea that school districts can now levy for the long-term facility maintenance, and that will allow all schools, especially the smaller schools like us out here in outstate Minnesota, to be able to levy for the maintenance of our buildings in the future. Of course, those of you on Operations Committee, you know, that Dave Turnberg has put together a ten-year plan that we have already approved, and we really do appreciate that. They talked a little bit about the two thousand sixteen legislative bonding bill. The legislature is expected to pass a one billion dollar bonding bill, and that would be for, you know, big building projects that will take place. And we talked a little bit about the gas tax. There was not a lot of support for increasing the gas tax. We talked a lot about the pending teacher shortage, and that was something that I think caught some of these state representatives off guard a little bit. They didn't realize that all the schools, every one of these schools that are represented had a challenging time finding certified teachers to teach. And that was kind of a surprise to them. And so, we talked a little bit about how we could encourage more people to consider going into teaching. We talked about the concentrated formula of compensatory revenue. Schools get additional money based on the number of free and reduced lunch students that you have, but in the metropolitan area, because they have a higher percentage of free and reduced lunch students, they get a higher number of reimbursement. And we talked about maybe someday, that'd be nice if we treated every school district the same. You know, a poor child here should be treated the same as a poor child in Minneapolis and St. Paul.
So the formula is different?
Yeah, it's called a concentrated formula. So the higher the percentage, as the percentage of free and reduced lunch numbers go up, you get more, it generates more money per student. And of course, we're at just a little over fifty percent at the elementary, but some of these schools in Minneapolis, St. Paul are eighty and ninety percent free and reduced lunch, and so they get a couple thousand dollars more per student than we do. And those of us in greater Minnesota always argue that, you know, a student in need is a student in need, and it shouldn't matter whether you live in Minneapolis or St. Paul, that what should matter is that if you qualify for free and reduced lunch, you should probably get the same compensatory revenue. But that's a political issue that's always fought between outstate Minnesota and the inner cities. We talked about the Board of Teaching. The Board of Teaching and the Minnesota Department of Ed both have jurisdiction over teacher licensure. And the Board of Teaching are the folks that are responsible to generate the tests that new teachers have to take. And they were under a mandate by the legislature to come up with a new test, and they have failed to do that. And so, we talked a little bit about maybe it's time to eliminate the Board of Teaching and just have the Minnesota Department of Ed do it like they used to. But that becomes a political issue too. The Education Minnesota has a number of members on the Board of Teaching. We talked about stackable credentials. That's a new phrase that I haven't heard much about, but they talk about stackable credentials of, of allowing someone that maybe is a certified electrician, that may be able to teach people how to do wiring, but doesn't have an education degree, that maybe we could do a stackable credential where they could let them teach while they're going back to school to get their teaching license. And we talked about that in a lot of areas, like computer science, math, science, business education, and vocational, those places that we find it's hard to recruit faculty members. We talked about the possibility of new teacher loan forgiveness to encourage new teachers. We talked about if there was an idea of maybe state funding for school resource officers. We talked about economic development zones, about how important it is for the state, obviously, and especially out here in greater Minnesota, to have economic development zones, which would encourage better paying jobs, more industry maybe to come out here to greater Minnesota that would generate additional revenue. One thing we talked about, we spent a lot of time talking about the need for mental health services for some of our students. Every single school district has students that are in need of mental health services, and we talked about the fact that the state should look at that. We talked about the need for full funding for special education. We talked about community service schools. One example that we talked about was Brooklyn Center up in the cities, where they actually have a doctor and a nurse and a dentist that are actually inside the school, and they provide services to the students right there. So instead of a student sick, they come to school, and they have an infirmary right there, they get their dental care there. It's kind of a full-service idea for a community service school. And then we talked about the future growth of early childhood education. You know, the governor's promoting the idea of universal preschool for all four-year-olds, and many schools are concerned about the lack of facilities for, for universal four-year-old preschool. And then we also talked about funding for school security. You know, Senator Rosen last year had an amendment on a bill that I went up and testified in favor of, that would allow school districts to levy local property taxes to secure the buildings. And so, if we ever have to do something at the high school to secure the entrance, our high school right now is, is pretty open. Once you come in those main doors, you can go anywhere without checking in. And that amendment didn't pass unfortunately, but it's something I think we want to continue to push for. So very good. And we also thank these legislators for their service. You know, legislators have to deal with a gazillion issues, and of course, as educators, we deal with education and transportation and making sure our kids are safe, but legislators are dealing with, you know, a hundred other important issues. And we really did appreciate the time that they came and spent the two hours with us on Friday afternoon. And they're very, you know, very caring people, so we did appreciate that. Any questions?
Any questions for Superintendent Brown? Well, mental health is an issue for families, not just the kids too, so that's probably something they have to take a look at too. Any other questions for Superintendent Brown? Okay, then we'll move on to financial business. Do we have some donations, Dan?
Yes, we have a couple. There is a revised appendix A, and then there's also, if I can find it here, another appendix B. First, I will introduce the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas the Fairmont Booster Club donated items totaling twenty-four thousand, four-hundred twenty-nine dollars and eight cents to Fairmont Area Schools' sports programs during two thousand fifteen, be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
Thank you, Dan Zarzak.
Second? Second.
Thank you, Nicole. So I have Dan introducing the resolution and Nicole with the second of that. I see on the backside of that sheet is a...
Shows the different purchases that were made, including, boy, golf balls, tennis balls, softball pitching machines, baseball bats, weight room, computer software programs, new garbage cans for the gym, and then the Hall of Fame banquet, which was a very nice event here earlier this fall too, so.
And they also donate a lot of awards, don't they, to the different, every sport?
The plaques and their, their programs and such that they have, the various sports have at the end of their seasons too, so.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a whole list there, so, alright. So I have Dan introducing the resolution and Nicole with the second. We have to vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, and we thank the Booster Club for those donations and all the hard work that they do to get all that money and then to give it out too, so thank you. And then, next one?
And there's another in appendix B. I would introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas Grace Lutheran Church Missions donated one thousand dollars to the Martin County Literacy Council, be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
Thank you, Dan Zarzak.
I'll second him.
Thank you, Julie. So I have Dan introducing the resolution and Julie with the second. We also have to vote on that one. Danielle?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, and we thank Grace Lutheran Missions for their donation to the Literacy Council. Alright, thank you, Dan. Then we'll move on to financial bills and reports, and Sue is here this evening to talk about that. Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight on the agenda, we have the approval of the November two thousand fifteen Treasurer's Report, wire transfers from November twentieth to December tenth, and the payment of the December eighth bills. So I'll begin with a sheet that looks like this. If you can see that. On the top is an expenditure report as of the end of November. This is something that you haven't seen for a few months. Now that the Board approved a revised budget here on November twenty-fourth, I thought I would bring this back. So on the left, you have the different funds, and then you have the column that actually has the Board-approved budget amount. The next column shows our monthly expenditures, so that's our expenditures for November. And then the next column is year-to-date, so from July one through the end of November. And then we have the percent of budget spent by each fund. So like in the general fund, we are, we have spent about twenty-eight percent of our budget. So then I kind of look at that big picture and think, okay, does that make sense? Well, you know, our teacher pay starts in September, so September, October, November, so we're at twenty-five percent of their pay. So, you know, looking at that, that makes sense to me. So then I'll just kind of take a peek at that. Any questions on that? Okay, then the next part is our transfers from November twentieth to December tenth. Just a few to point out. The second one is our net payroll from November, four hundred and ninety-four thousand. Second one from the bottom then is our P-card payment, six thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And I'll go through that register with you here in a moment. And then at the bottom, we have our total payroll, but disbursements for November was nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Okay? And then on the back of that, you have the Treasurer's Report or Cash Balance Report as of the end of November. So we have all the different funds and the different accounts within each fund, and then what that cash balance is at the end of the month. If there are no questions, then I'll move to the P-card report or the register. Just one to bring to your attention there, it's the payment made out to Minnesota Secretary of State. What we do each year with renting out the Hunt Farm is we put a lien on the crop, and just to make sure that we're paid for the rent. This is something that the Operations Committee had asked us to do a few years ago. So then we file this online with the Minnesota Secretary of State. And this is actually for the two thousand sixteen growing season. Do you have any questions on anything else listed on the P-card register? And then I can go to the register dated December eighth. And here in December, we just have, are having one meeting, but we do follow our schedule for paying our bills. So we have these payments dated November, or December eighth, and then Julie, our treasurer, came in and met with me the day before, and we reviewed those before they were sent out. So I just have a few to bring to your attention. The payment to Minnesota Theater International is for rentals for the Mary Poppins, the musical from last month. And then check number fifty-seven, eight-eighty, made out to MRCI. This is for a couple of our special needs students, and this is for their folk rehab. Tip, in the past, this was paid by Southern Plains, and then they billed us, but we've streamlined that a bit, so we're paying it direct. And then check number fifty-seven, eight-ninety, made out to Scholastic Book Fairs. That was for the book fair held at the elementary here this fall. Do you have any questions on that register? As I mentioned, Julie and I reviewed that one on December seventh, and the rest of the reports, we did review this afternoon before the board meeting.
If there are no questions, I then would make a motion to approve the November two thousand fifteen Treasurer's Report, wire transfers for November twentieth, two thousand fifteen to December twel- tenth, two thousand fifteen, and payment of the December eighth, two thousand fifteen bills.
Thank you, Julie Zarzak.
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. I have a motion by Julie, second by Rufus, to approve the Treasurer's Report for December. I've presented. Any further questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So then, your next check run will be December twenty-second?
Correct.
And then Julie will go, you'll visit with that?
Yep, we have a time set. She's going to come in beforehand.
Okay. Alright, so then we're just...
Yeah, that way vendors can continue to be paid on time and just keep that cycle.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Alright, next on the agenda is our truth and taxation hearing, but we need to wait a few minutes to handle that, so that will go to the end of the agenda. And then if you look ahead, there's no old business listed on there. And then we will go to new business, the MSBA Conference, Julie?
Yes, the MSBA Winter Conference, the Leadership Conference, will be held January fifteenth and sixteenth up in the cities. And by law, the school board must approve the board members attending this overnight conference, because we stay overnight. And members this year that have, are planning to go include Diane Gerhart, Rufus Rodriguez, Dan Brookins, and myself. So, I would make a motion to approve board members' overnight attendance at the MSBA Leadership Conference, January fifteenth and sixteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you, Julie Zarzak. Second? Thank you, Dan. A motion by Julie, second by Dan, to approve the MSBA Leadership Conference attendance by school board members. Any further discussion or questions on that item? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we have a couple of employments. Nicole?
The first is regarding the employment of a dean at the elementary school. Four candidates were interviewed in the committee, the interview committee consisted of Jim Davison, Michelle Rosen, Carly Sonic, Amy Becker, and Derek Spear. They unanimously recommended that Sean Chambers be hired for the position. He holds a bachelor's degree in health administration from Ashford University with past experience, including serving as a youth counselor and behavior, health, and intervention specialist at Forage Ridge Youth Services, working as a professional, paraprofessional for Southern Plains Co-op, and serving as the mentoring coordinator for Martin County. Most recently, Sean's position with Martin County was that of family preservation worker. With that, I move to approve the employment of Sean Chambers as the elementary dean of students effective January fourth, two thousand sixteen, through the end of the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year at a salary of BA Step One.
Thank you, Nicole. Zarzak?
I'll second him.
Thank you, Julie. So I have a motion by Nicole, second by Julie, to approve the employment of Sean Chambers as a dean of students at Fairmont Elementary. Any further discussion on that item? Well, I think it'll probably come up in the staff welfare, but we did talk about it as, we'll have to decide if we're going to continue that position then for the next year, so this will just be to the end of this school year for Mr. Chambers, so. Yep. Do you have anything to add on that? Okay, alright. So I have a motion by Nicole, second by Julie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second one?
Yes, it's for a title aide. The current title aide is not able to continue her noon hour supervision, supervision responsibilities because she will be student teaching during that time. We advertised for a two-hour supervisory aide, and Principal Davison is recommending that Amber Nacmus be hired for the position. That I move to approve, the hiring of Amber Nacmus for, as a supervisory noon hour aide beginning December sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, at a salary of Step One.
Thank you, Nicole Zarzak.
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. A motion by Nicole, second by Rufus, to approve the employment of Amber Nacmus as the supervisory noon hour aide. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, then we're down to board committee reports. Operations Committee meeting. Danielle?
Yeah, the operations committee met on Thursday, December 10th. We had three things on the agenda. We, Sue briefed us on the truth and taxation hearing that she's going to talk about shortly here. And then the fine arts budget. The high school band, choir, and orchestra have requested a $6,000 increase in their travel budget for the current school year. And the operations committee approved that request with the understanding that principal in this will meet with the fine arts department to go over the number of students that will be missing school for the events. And then the replacement of a sound system mixer at the high school. The public address system was installed in 1992. The cost to replace it is $1,349. So the committee approved to purchase a new one and install that.
That was at the PAC?
No, in the gymnasium at the high school.
Oh yeah, I was at a game the other night and it didn't work at all. Just what, it just stopped?
That's why it's being replaced. And the mixer, it does, we did do the research. It was installed in 1992. And they're not replacing the entire PA system, they're just replacing the mixer. If you can recall, just in the last year, we had to replace the mixer at the football field. And that was done. Now that works well, but this is what, eight, 15, 23 years old? So it's time to replace.
Alright, any other questions for operations committee? Alright, then we'll go to staff welfare committee. Rufus?
Staff welfare committee met yesterday. And we discussed the new position of elementary dean of students, which Nicole has already briefed us on. We had a information that we'll be discussing, a couple business points, you know, in a forthcoming meeting. And then the other important topic was information coming from staff development and curriculum committee regarding Q-COMP revisions. And just for information, Q-COMP is a program through the state that is, provides incentives for districts to, you know, to enhance their professional development programs within the schools. And it includes elements of teachers observing other teachers to critique their, you know, their tactics in the classroom and offering suggestions on how, you know, how they might, you know, improve, you know, their instruction. And so, the staff development and curriculum committee is proposing that a major change in the, in the observation piece of this program. And they are proposing that, that the district hire two full-time observers or, I like to think of them as coaches, you know, teaching coaches. You know, to work with the teachers throughout the district to, you know, to, you know, help improve instruction in the classroom. And I think this is an important step forward because at the, at last year's school board conference, I met with, there were a couple presentations by a couple of school districts around the state that have introduced this, this strategy into the district, you know, hiring, you know, a group of full-time coaches. And, you know, as met, they met with great success, you know, improving, you know, student achievement. Helping, you know, basically working with teachers as a, as a colleague and a resource, you know, to provide ideas of how, you know, how to improve instruction. I think that this proposal to hire two full-time observers will have to be approved by the teachers' union. You know, and hopefully they'll, they'll endorse it, right? But I think it's a great step forward.
And it was, and Nicole, you were there yesterday too. It was almost an unanimous vote out of the staff development curriculum committee. I think just one person voted against it. And, and this money, by the way, would come from the Q-COMP revenue that's generated. So it's not additional, it's not an additional expense for the school district. It's, it's money that's generated. We, if you're a Q-COMP district, you get $260 per student of additional state aid and some of its local property taxes to, to pay for that program. So it generates about $460,000 each year. And so, if we had two full-time faculty members, one at the elementary, one at the high school. One of the, one of the comments that came up yesterday was that, one of the teachers pointed out that one advantage of having two people is that they get to see all 115 faculty members. And so, they, they really get to concentrate on 50 or 60 faculty members. And as they see more people, they can say, gee, you should go see what so-and-so is doing because I just saw this yesterday. And rather than, right now, we have over 20 individual teachers that serve as part-time teacher observers and they see maybe four or five teachers throughout the year. And one of the big things that the state requires is that you have what's called inter-rater reliability. In other words, consistency in the observation process. And so, I think the staff development committee felt that by having two fully-trained people that really, that's all they do is, is coach teachers on what they're doing well and suggestions on what they might try differently, might be a better way to go. And so, it will be an important decision for the faculty to make. And as administrators, of course, we don't have a vote on the staff development committee, but we were there to listen. It was, I thought it was a very good discussion. Don't you think, Nicole?
Yes, it was. And it, there was a lot of thought put into it by everyone. It was not a quick discussion. It was quite lengthy and that took up the majority of the meeting. And I, I could tell by the discussion that was had that people have really been reflecting about how to better serve our students and, and our teachers. It's not easy to be an observer and a full-time teacher. It, it takes a lot of time to be an observer and just how we can better meet the needs of our staff and our students.
So what would be the requirements, what would be the training necessary for, for someone that would be employed in that job?
Well, I think first of all, you'd want, you'd have to be at least a certified teacher. And then someone that had significant experience, I would think. It might be someone that has a strong curriculum background.
Is there any post-secondary education offered in Minnesota right now that specializes in that field?
Actually, the Minnesota Department of Education provides professional training for Q-COMP observers and Q-COMP coaches, which is very well done. I think also there are faculty members on our staff that have a really strong curriculum background or just outstanding teachers that, our hope is that by, by the teachers making that decision within the next month, then, then the next process is going to be to recruit two people that would be willing to either step out of the classroom. One of the things that the staff curriculum committee wanted is that a three-year commitment. So if you're going to come out of the classroom, that we want you to come out for at least three years. So that we have continuity over the three-year process. And of course, and if we can't find anybody or if no one steps forward in our current faculty, then that gives us time to recruit somebody to come into our system. So whether it's an internal candidate or candidates or external candidates. But there are people, you know, Dan, that do go back to school specifically for curriculum and instruction. And so, I think there's a, but we also have, we have some very good faculty members, I think, that would maybe be interested in this position, so.
There are conferences as well. They, we discussed that last night too. Whether it's better to have teachers go to these conferences, these training conferences and just have one or two go, or to have an online conference course that's very hands-on where you can have a lot of teachers participate. And so, for PLC leaders as well. There's, there's a lot of training that the state offers and that it's not, it's not something new to have training, this type of training available.
And my understanding was there were several options presented to talk about, so it wasn't just, this was, there were, how many options did you have?
There were three options that the SDCC looked at. The one that was, had the majority vote was the option that Rufus talked about. And then the two other options, the first option, I don't even remember because nobody voted for it and it wasn't even hardly discussed. The second option was to have one teacher who had, who was just, it was kind of to keep it as it is, but to have one teacher who has time set aside at the high school for one hour a day to do just paperwork for a Q-COMP because it is very paperwork-intensive.
Yeah, to Dan's question about, about competence. You know, one of the things that I've discovered, you know, you know, since I've been on the school board and trying to immerse myself in the science of education is that, you know, a lot has been done in the last 20 years in terms of studying education and trying to figure out, you know, what strategies work, you know, what strategies are less effective. And then there's, and there's, and it's a complicated area. And there's, but there's a lot of information out there. And the challenge for teachers is to try to incorporate all of this good information into, you know, into their classroom approach. And that, that's why it, you know, it's a great idea to have a, a couple individuals who, you know, who can be the resident experts on, you know, on this information. And they can be, as I say, you know, a resource for their colleagues. And they can go, you know, and they can, you know, keep current with, you know, with the, the science and the information by going to conferences, you know, both in-person and online. But it's, you know, it, it, there's a great deal of expertise. And we do have a few teachers, you know, on the faculty that, you know, that have really taken, you know, this very seriously. And are, you know, are resident experts and, and, but we don't have them in a full-time position right now. And so, you know, I think, you know, whether it's from within or from without, I think it would be a great addition to the district.
It's good something to think about and, you know, see what the best options are be, so, yeah, very good. Alright, any other questions for staff welfare? Well, it is 6 o'clock exactly. So we'll have Sue come back and talk to us about the truth of taxation and we'll work on that. You should have documents in front of you on, on her presentation.
Okay, tonight on the agenda, we have the approval of the 2015 payable 2016 tax levy. And as a requirement of that, we have a truth and taxation hearing, which is what we're doing tonight. But before I get to the PowerPoint, I just wanted to remind you of a few things. The levy is set in calendar year 2015. Taxpayers pay during calendar year 2016. The school district will have these dollars available for their use during the 16-17 school year, which starts July 1, 2016. Even though this pay 16 levy is for the 16-17 school year, I just wanted to remind you of two things that happened actually for the 14-15 school year that continue on. One of those is that the state now funds all-day, everyday kindergarten and that started, like I said, in the 14-15 school year. So we're in the second year of that. And also that the pupil unit waiting changed. So now all of our students through grade six are weighted out of 1.0 and our secondary students are now weighted out of 1.2. The formula allowance for a student in kindergarten through sixth grade is $6,067 for that 16-17 school year, so for next school year. And so, our secondary students, grades seven through 12, the formula is $7,280.40. School districts have levy authority in two ways. One is by legislative action and the other is by voter approval. So something new and Superintendent Brown discussed this a little bit tonight. But previously, school districts, when we had building issues to address, the school was not allowed to simply increase their levy to levy for those types of things unless there was voter approval. We did have some deferred maintenance dollars, but it really wasn't enough to address the needs that, that we had. So in addition to those deferred maintenance dollars, districts would use classroom dollars for things like building repairs, roof repairs, parking lot improvements. Or they could go to their voters and ask for approval or things were not repaired timely. But new for the 16-17 school year, so our next school year, school districts will have levy authority to levy for long-term facility maintenance issues. So now when we have building issues to address, we'll have a funding mechanism to do so. As Superintendent Brown mentioned, we needed to come up with a 10-year plan for our facilities. We had a pretty short window to get that done. So we are planning to revisit that annually. And as of right now, we're going to do that in January with our operations committee and our supervisor of building and grounds. So what we want to do there is really plan out our deferred maintenance projects like those roofing, painting, lighting replacements, parking lot resurfacing, track resurfacing, bleach replacements. You know, really plan that out over, you know, 10 years and come up with a good, well-thought-out plan. Just looking at the levy here, just to remind you that it is based on estimates. We put in estimated pupil units for our 16-17 school year. And here we are, we're just in December of the prior year. So it is really estimates. And then we put in estimates for things like reemployment. So then what happens is in future levies, when we have actual numbers, there are adjustments to our levies to bring things to actual. Our 2015 payable 2016 tax levy is proposed to go up by 5%. There are three main areas that our levy is changing, our levy authority is changing, that will result in this increase. Our operating referendum, the levy share, the split, because our referendum's not going up, but the split of how it's paid, some is state aid and some is local levy, the split of that is changing. So the local levy piece is going up by about $88,000. And that's because our referendum market value of the district is going up, okay? And then also our local option revenue, the levy share there is going up by $46,000. And that's also due to our referendum market value of the district going up. And then the third reason is this long-term facilities maintenance levy. With this new levy authority, it's $193 per pupil unit for the 16-17 school year. So that's about $361,000. I'm not quite sure if Superintendent Brown mentioned this or not, but this long-term facilities maintenance levy is something that the largest 25 school districts in the state always had authority to do. And, you know, they had that for many, many years and people really did feel that was unfair to the smaller and moderate-sized school districts because we have facility needs as well. So then the legislature did provide a mechanism for our size school district to do this. And, and so, we were very pleased about that. Now I will move on to the PowerPoint. As I mentioned, it's the 2015 payable 2016 truth and taxation meeting. There is a truth and taxation law that tells us what we need to do. One thing is that all taxpayers need to receive a mailed notice of what their proposed taxes are. That notice actually comes from the county. So in September, after the board approves the proposed amount, then I forward on to the county and the state what our proposed amount is. And then the county puts that together and mails that out. And then we must have a public meeting and that's what we're doing here tonight. As part of this public meeting, we need to do a few things. One is, we talk about the proposed taxes for payable 2016. We need to talk about our current year budget, the 15-16 budget that was approved by the board on November 24th. And then the public is allowed time to speak. A few points to remember, our revenue formulas are set by the state legislature, except for voter-approved referendums. The local levy and state aid mix or split are set by the state legislature. And some are dependent on that referendum market value or adjusted net tax capacity of the district. And an increase in local taxes does not necessarily mean an increase in revenues. Like with that referendum, we're going to receive the same amount, it's just where it comes from. Okay, now we'll move to the budget. This is the budget that the board approved on November 24th. So just a little overview on our funds. General fund or Fund 1, our revenue is based on projected student enrollment. The learning levy is part of the general fund. The general fund is where we provide for our classroom instruction, our supplies, our equipment, our activities. It's also where we pay for our special education costs. As well as our pupil transportation and our extracurricular activities. So that would be all of our fine arts and, and our sports. Then the food service is Fund 2. And this is where we have our revenues and expenditures for our school breakfast and lunch program, our summer feeding program, and our new fresh fruit and vegetable program. Then we have the community service fund, which is Fund 4. The levy here for community education is based on the population of the district. And the early childhood levy is based on the number of children under five years of age. This is where we provide enrichment programs for any age. That's not part of the K-12 education. education program. And so we have different things in this fund, like our adult basic education, our school readiness, early childhood family education, and community education and recreation. And then in Fund V is our capital fund. Just to remind you, I believe the board, you'll probably remember this, we keep our Funds I and Five separate, our capital fund and our general fund, but the state does look at those combined. So in the capital fund is where we'll have this long-term facilities maintenance levy. This is that new levy authority we spoke of. This replaces the deferred maintenance and the health and safety levy. And then this is where we have our capital expenditures and improvements. Then we have our debt service levy, which is Fund VII, and this is where we pay for our bonds, where our building bonds, and we do have four building bonds. And then we have our trust and agency, which is Funds XV and XVII, our enrichment and farm fund. And then Fund X is student activities. So now looking at the actual revenue budget, again, this is what the board approved on November 24th. So in total, our revenue budget is $23,103,785. In the general fund, that's $17,853,000. So where does our money come from? 83.3% comes to us in the form of state aid, 2.5% come to us in the form of federal aid, 11.3% is local taxes, and 2.9% is other local dollars. Just to remind you, in case I didn't say this, this is the general fund. So the slide before was all funds, but for the general fund, this is where the dollars come from. Now looking at our expenditures, in total, $23,441,725. And in the general fund, $18,246,000. You probably noticed that a couple slides ago, the revenue for the general fund was only $17,853,000, where expenditures are $18,246,000. That's because we are spending some dollars out of some assigned fund balances. So those are dollars that were saved in prior years that we assigned for certain things, and those are like in technology, curriculum, staff development, QCOMP, and literacy. So then we go to how are our general fund dollars spent? Well, we spend 4.2% of our dollars on district and school administration, and that is about $234 per student less than the state average. And that state average figure comes from when our auditors were here and they presented the audit report. They actually gather data on all school districts, what they're spending on certain things. And so that information comes right from our auditors. Regular instruction, we spend just about 50% of our general fund dollars. Vocational instruction, just about 3%, and that's about $104 more per student than the state average. So in vocational, we spend more. And then instructional support services is 6.3%, but that, just to let you know, that's curriculum, media center, staff development, those types of things. Pupil support, we're just under 10%, and that's where we have our counseling, our nursing department, our transportation, pupil transportation. So just another way to look at it, what does our general fund budget pay for? Well, we, our salary and wages come up to 50.4% of our general fund budget. Then if you add our benefits, a 16.8%, that comes up with salary and benefits are 67.2% of our budget. Well, in addition to that, we contract with Southern Plains for some of our special education services. So if I would add to that the amount that we would pay Southern Plains, that would come up to 79% of our budget is for salaries and benefits. Our payment to Southern Plains is in the area of purchase services. Couple other things that are in that area are transportation, electricity, and water. And then supplies and materials are 5.3%. And in addition to supplies and materials, as it says, that's where our curriculum would be and our heating for our buildings. And then capital and other are just, are under 1%. So then looking at the components of the general fund fund balance, or where do we expect to end the year? And this was part of the budget that the board approved the last time. So we're looking at, at the end of the year, on June 30th, 2016, we're estimating we'll have about $169,000 in the staff development area, about $108,000 in the committed for masonry, $400,000 in committed for OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits, about $1.3 million in assigned fund balances in the areas of, you know, literacy, technology, curriculum, wellness, and QCOMP, and about $3 million in our unassigned area. As you remember, our goal is two months, and so this is right at that two months, so we're very pleased about that. We do know that there's been a few things that have been approved since the board approved the budget last month, like the dean of students at the elementary that will start in January, and some of the music things. And so we know that our budget is, will be changing, and so I'll bring a new budget back to the board here this spring. Okay, moving back to the levy, this is kind of a repeat. It's the 2015 payable 2016 levy for the 16-17 school year. We set it here in calendar year 2015. Taxpayers pay in calendar year 2016. Authority for school levies comes to a school district either by states, set by the legislature or state formula or voter-approved. Then we look at how are our levy dollars spent? Well, we spend 50% of them in the general fund, or general and then our capital fund. And that's for district instructional programs. And then 3% go in community education, and 47% in debt service. And again, debt service is where we have our four bond issues for our buildings. Looking at how does this compare with our last levy? So our pay 15 actual levy was $5,141,000. Our proposed pay 16, or this levy, $5,399,000, which is a $257,000 increase or a 5% increase. Just a couple points to mention, how could your property taxes increase or decrease? Well, the value of your property could increase or decrease, or the value of other properties may increase or decrease, and that would change the share that your property is of the tax base, whether your value changed or not, or there could be voter approval. So here's just a recap of by fund, the payable 2016, what we have proposed. And then I added this slide after the operations meeting on Thursday. We just wanted to kind of do a little comparison. In pay 13, we levied $5,468,000. Pay 14 was $5,577,000. Pay 15, $5,141,000. So that last year when we had this hearing, we had that reduction of $436,000. And now for pay 16, we're at $5,399,196.5. And that is, even though that is that 5% increase, it is still less than we had in pay 13 and pay 14. And as you remember, the three reasons on why ours is going up, the, two of them were for the split with the referendum market value going up, and the other one is the long-term facilities maintenance. You know, without the long-term facilities maintenance, you know, we would not have an increase in our levy. It would actually be going down a little bit.
Sue, I have a clarifying question. The tax statements that our property owners have received, they've already received them, right?
Correct.
And previously, we had a higher percent than 5%. Didn't we?
No, our max amount was higher, but we, the board took action in September for the 5% for the proposed, and that's what went to the county, was the proposed amount.
So the tax statements that people have received is accurate?
Well, based on our 5% proposed amount, correct.
Okay, good.
You know, if a district was going out for a referendum, that would not have been on someone's tax statement, but we did not have that here.
So for example, the three districts in the county, Martin County West, which increased their operating levy, Truman, that increased their operating levy, and Grenada Huttley East Chain, which increased their operating levy, the actual taxes that people will pay in those three districts will be, probably be higher than what was on their tax statement.
I believe that to be correct.
Because the tax statement came out before the voters approved.
Right, right.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for me?
Final question on that, when do taxpayers know exactly what to pay then?
When they have their statement in the spring.
Well, they'll get a new statement, that will be the revised statement.
Right, right. The actual, what you actually pay on.
Because, who was it? Was it Grenada Huttley East Chain was one that passed the new bond for a gymnasium, right?
Right.
And they also passed an increase in their operating levy.
Right, and like with their bond, I don't know if that will go on their pay 16 taxes. I guess I didn't follow that.
And Truman increased their operating levy, and Martin County West increased their operating levy, but they also did some facility stuff. So that will hit those taxes, too. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the board?
And I just want to say publicly, we have two board members that need to, they have family issues they need to deal with at 6:30. So if you need to be excused, go ahead and get going. Yep.
Do you have any questions?
The rest of us will stay.
Do you two have any questions? Do you three have any questions? Come on.
Yep.
Mark Katava. The, you said you did not have a 10-year plan for facilities maintenance, but yet you are levying tax dollars at a 5% increase, so how do you know how much to ask for?
I'll answer that. We had to come up...
Sue, Mike?
What, we had to come up with a 10-year plan, which we did, and our supervisor, Building and Grounds, has always done an amazing job and usually has a three-to-five-year plan anyway. But in order to levy for this, we had to submit to the Department of Education a 10-year plan.
And all districts had to do that.
And all districts had to do that in order to be able to levy.
Right.
So it was just finalizing that and getting it to them.
But I understood you say you did not have a 10-year plan.
No, we had to come up with a 10-year plan in a short timeframe.
Yeah.
Sorry if I misspoke.
We, our district always had at least a three-year plan or a five-year plan. That was not required by state statute, but we always had one so we could project down the road. But under state statute, they do require all districts to have a 10-year plan. And it was pretty easy for us to put that together because we already had a five-year plan in place. And that 10-year plan, by the way, is available. If you need a copy of that, we'd be glad to provide that to you.
And we're going to review it again in January, that we want to do every year, to review it.
Yep.
The benefit of that is, you know, as you remember, a couple of years ago, we had to go with the facilities improvement, you know, in which we had to go to the taxpayers and then, you know, for bond referendums to, you know, to pay for that. And now because it's part, and we can budget those things throughout as the years come up, we can avoid that, and we can keep our buildings and that in good shape, and then, you know, take good care of our things, but be able to budget for it as well as each thing comes up.
Right, and look at, like, let's say your parking lots and, you know, however many years those should be, you know, seal-coated or, you know, whatever the right word is.
Just like anybody would do in a business.
So I think we have a good plan. It was put together fairly quick, but we do have a good plan that we'll continue to look at annually.
It's not set in stone, it's just...
It's a plan.
It's a plan.
Right, it's a plan. You know, because something, you know, we're looking at doing roofing starting in July, well, maybe some other need could pop up that we feel is more important that we thought we were going to do in three years.
Any other questions?
Do we know how much the other districts are going up?
I could have found that out, but I didn't.
Okay, I guess we'll find out. We'll have to read the paper or listen to the radio, but, okay.
Is there any other questions?
Very clear, very good.
Thank you.
I'll give one last call for questions. All right, then the board will need to take action on this. Would you?
Let me get back to that page in my agenda. So yes, I would then make a motion to approve the 2015-2016 payable tax levy as presented in the amount of, which amount should I use?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, Sue?
Correct.
All right. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. I have a motion by Julie, second by Rufus, to approve the 2015 payable 2016 tax levy as presented for $5,399,196.5, or 5%. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Okay, anything, any other business that the board needs to talk about this evening? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. I have a motion by Julie, second by Rufus, to approve adjourning the school board meeting at 6:24 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for coming.